This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Willmet Zoning Board of Appeals. Ms. Roberts, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Felkoff.
Here.
Ms. Norick.
Here.
Mr. Pelletin.
Here.
Mr. Sermon.
Here.
Ms. Urban.
Here.
Chairman Schneider.
Here. Ms. Roberts, could you please tell the audience as to how they can connect in this meeting, which is remotely being remotely conducted?
This meeting is being conducted remotely via Microsoft Teams. For those watching this video in the future, the state of Illinois is currently under a stay-at-home order issued by Governor J.B. Pritzker due to the coronavirus global pandemic. As a result, all in-person governmental meetings have been canceled. However, the Open Meetings Act now permits electronic meetings of governmental bodies like the Zoning Board of Appeals, and this evening we are conducting our business in compliance with the state law. Tonight, this meeting is being broadcast live on YouTube Live. The URL for that is www.youtube.com/user/villageofwillmet/live. To participate in the meeting, you can join through Microsoft Teams. Visit the Village's website at www.willmet.com and find the calendar event for the zoning board meeting. There is a link there for you to join the meeting. You will also find the meeting agenda and case reports under this calendar entry. Alternatively, you can view the meeting on YouTube and call into the meeting, allowing you to listen and speak using your telephone. The phone number is 872-239-8225. Tonight's meeting code is 619-503-585. This information is on the website as well. If you are using the phone, press *6 to mute and unmute yourself. Whether using Teams or the telephone, staff does not have the ability to unmute any participants. You may also submit your comments through YouTube Live and emails to comdev@willmet.com. A member of the Village staff will read your comment to the zoning board. All comments to the zoning board will be recorded in the meeting minutes, as we typically do. For our guests joining the meeting by Teams, when you are not speaking, please keep your device muted to minimize disruption of the proceedings, and please keep your video turned off so that the board members can be seen. Mr. Chairman, back to you.
Thank you, and I'm sure maybe some of you know, but this will be the last meeting that will be conducted remotely beginning July 7. The meetings will return to in-person meetings at City Hall. For those of you new to our proceedings, the purpose of this board is to hear evidence on applications for variances from our zoning ordinance and on applications for special use. Based upon the evidence we hear this evening, we will make recommendations to the Village Board of Trustees as to whether the applications that come before us this evening should be granted or denied. We will vote to recommend granting or denying each application for variation based on whether the application meets the standards of review set forth in Section 5.4. F of our village ordinance. Applications for special use will be considered based on whether the standards of review set forth in Section 5.3. E of our village ordinance are met. The Village Board of Trustees will consider the recommendations we make this evening at their next regularly scheduled meeting on July 13. Our recommendations to the board are advisory only. The Village Board has final say on all applications and will make its own determination as to whether to grant or deny them. The Village Board is not legally bound by our recommendations. There's one small exception. If this board makes a negative recommendation with respect to an application, in order for the Village Board of trustees to approve that application, a supermajority of five Village Board members must vote to approve it, rather than a simple majority of four. There's one other requirement that you should be aware of. For this board to approve or to support an application, it requires four votes. And today, we have six. Six of seven members are present. Excuse me, so four of the six are required to approve the recommendation, to approve an application. In recognition of this, the fact that we don't have a full complement of members here today, we give applicants who are scheduled to come before us this night the option of requesting continuance to the next available date on our schedule. The next available date for any applicant who would like to request a continuance this evening is August 18. There's no penalty for asking for a continuance. No such request will be held against you when your case is eventually heard. If you wish to ask for a continuance, however, you must do so at the beginning of your presentation before making any substantive arguments as to the merits of your case. Please also be aware that if you request a continuance, there's no guarantee as to how many board members will be present on the evening to which your case is continued. The cases we shall hear this evening that will be heard this evening are set forth on the published agenda. When your case is called, please state your name and address and tell us exactly why your application meets the standards of review that are applicable to it. Each member of this board is a longtime resident of the village and has visited your property during the past week. In addition, we have received from Village staff a report containing all written information that you have submitted in support of your application, as well as any other correspondence that the village has received. Accordingly, it's not necessary that you repeat what you have already stated in writing. Please just hit the high points with particular attention as to why you believe your application meets the standards of review. After the applicant has had a chance to speak, we will open the floor to others who wish to speak on the application. I will recognize each attendee to ask if you have a comment, so please be called, wait to be called. Everyone will be permitted to have their say, but we would ask that you keep your comments as short and to the point as possible. After we have heard all oral presentations, I will close the evidence, and the members of the board will discuss what they have heard and take a vote. Once the evidence is closed, no further testimony on an application may be offered. The only people entitled to speak during that part of the proceedings will be members of the board. This meeting is a legal proceeding, and all testimony tonight must be given under oath. If you are here planning to testify tonight, I will ask you to raise your right hand at this time and be sworn. Do you swear or affirm that you will tell the truth in the testimony that you're about to give? If so, please say, "I do."
I do.
I do.
Thank you. We may have to swear in others as the meeting goes on. Ms. Roberts, will you please call the first case?
The first case that was noticed for tonight is 2021-Z26, 200 South of Place, if anyone is following along. This case has been rescheduled to July 7. There is no action needed by the board.
We don't have to approve the...
Nope, it does not need to be continued.
Okay.
Similarly, Case 2021-Z28, 718 Forest, was also newspaper notice for this meeting, but is not able to be heard and is being rescheduled to July 21. Also, this one does not require any action by the zoning board.
Okay.
So our next case that we are discussing is 2021-Z29, 407 Alpine Lane. This is a request for a 3.78-foot side yard air conditioner setback variation to permit the relocation of one condenser and the installation of a second condenser, and our applicants are here.
Hello, good evening.
Hello, thank you.
Hello.
I'm Cara Kozlaskis, 407 Alpine Lane. My husband is with the kids at another location, but we're both here. Should I just jump in and state my case?
Please proceed.
Thank you, I've never done this before. As Ms. Roberts said, we're requesting a 3.78-foot setback variance because our home being on a corner lot, we had a exist, we drew up architecture plans for the remodel of the first floor of the home, and in opening up a wall, we needed to put a second furnace system to service the second floor, separate from the first one. The house was built with one system, with one air conditioning unit on the west side of the home. In building out the construction, they had to put the, rather than putting the unit in the center of the attic upstairs because of the amount of headspace that was available, they had to end up pushing it to the east end of the house further, to the point that the original plan, as permitted with the village, was to put the second air conditioning unit next to the existing one in the side yard. But it is beyond the 75-foot feet limitation, which is the distance from the furnace and cooling coil that would be efficient. So we were advised to put it behind the home, kind of in the center of the home. There used to be a door in that location, which has been closed off and bricked off, so there's nothing else in that space. Everything is in the packet. Ms. Roberts, are you able to share the picture that I submitted, please? Or would you like me to share my screen for that?
I can do it unless you want to give it a try. I'm ready.
I have it up here. Let's see if you all can see it. Just to give you a reference, I drew a little red line here. The request would be to put the new condenser in this general area here. I'm going to note that this existing brick wall that protrudes to the north of my home is about three and a half feet. The entire air conditioning handle that we're requesting would still be within the border, if you were to draw this imaginary red line, everything would still sit within this setback. We've asked the neighbors' permission, and they did not have a problem with it. Their letter, they wrote a letter on our behalf, which is in the final page of your packet. This bush line is on our property, we understand, and there's on the other side. They just requested that it not be on the north side of the path. We would, of course, put the unit as close to the home as possible on this area. The second part of our request is to, if we're going to do this, to relocate the one that's currently on the west side of the house over to go next to that one. Just for efficiency, because that is, we don't know, we think it's 25-plus years old, but when it is, it is near the end of its life expectancy, and when that fails, it will not be repaired because of the nature of the freon inside, and so we would need to be replacing that anyway. So we would like to put them together in the same location. Any questions? Does that work?
Yes, I, when I, I spoke with your husband today and walked me around, and I understand, I maybe understand that 75 feet is sort of the maximum limit to tie a condensing unit into the air handling, which is on the other side of the house, on the east side of the house, basically, the second and the basement unit. I asked him, and maybe Mr. Roberts can advise us. I asked your husband whether there was any reason why you didn't locate it on the east side of your house toward the street. And go ahead.
I do not have a complete answer. I asked them the same question. I know that that's going towards the garage space, and what they told me was they were thinking about just the roof line. And to be honest, I wasn't up there when they were installing it, and I don't know 1,000% if there was a mechanical reason that it had to go to the east or they just, it was, from my understanding, it was a matter of the walls that had to be built around the furnace per the code. And as they started getting into the various things that were enclosing the furnace unit up there, they were running out of space. I think they were looking at the path of least resistance while they were in the attic, and they appeared to have more space. Maybe there was less insulation over there. I don't have the complete answer, but I came back to the property to find this setup, and they told me that they were going to, because they were working towards putting the air conditioning unit next to the other one. And I showed some of you who I met today, where you can see the pipe coming out of the brick on the west side of the home, because we got that far before I was aware that an appeal was an option. They had gone back to the architect once and asked about putting it where they preferred, in the center of the house where I'm requesting now, and they were told no, but I didn't know there was an appeal process at that time. So they began to put it there, but they can't put it directly next to the existing unit. They've got about a four-foot gap, because again, they're worried about that 75-feet line, and they said, "We can't go to 84 at that point." And so whatever the numbers were, that was where we were at with that one.
Yeah, this is Bob Sermon. The 75-foot is a standard number. It has to do mainly with the refrigerant line and how far the refrigerant can travel before it is not effective.
Lisa.
Doesn't work as well.
Lisa, the question, is there a, to put it in the side yard facing the street, which I'm talking about, the east side of the house, is there a restriction that we should know about?
Yeah. It needs to meet the front yard setback. I can't put my hands on what that number is now, but the house is at, you know, 24.5 feet now, so the minimum would be 25, and it may be greater. We do have a provision where they can locate it behind the setback as long as it's screened, but I don't think they would make that in this location.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for the applicant?
No.
Okay. Thank you very much. I think we can have a motion if we can.
Okay, I'll make the motion. I move to recommend granting a request for a 3.8 side yard air conditioner setback variation to permit the relocation of one condenser and the installation of a second condenser at 407 Alpine Lane in accordance with the plan submitted.
I'll second that.
Okay. Being an architect, I looked at it, and I think this is a good location for it. My main concern initially was the neighbors, because I noticed that they had a table and chairs outside their house adjacent to this. But as long as you've contacted them and you've gotten their approval, I think it's an acceptable location. So I can support it.
And I too think it's an appropriate location, certainly more appropriate than on the patio or immediately adjacent to the patio where the existing one is and where the air conditioning technicians originally proposed putting it. My one concern about this is the provision that says that the owner did not create the problem. The plate of the property owner was not created by the owners due to unique circumstances. In this case, the property owner, the reason why they're doing this is because of the work that's being done inside. But that said, I asked too about the neighbor and was glad to hear that they had, you know, no issue with it. As I pointed out to Ms. Kozlaskis, it's not just the current neighbor, though. I mean, the next person who moves in needs to be considered as well. The, who knows how long the Kozlaskis's will stay there? It could be forever, or it could be day and a half. And who knows how long that neighbor might be there? In any event, I think that given the circumstances, that this is the best choice of anywhere around the house. And that if they have to do it, then that would be the best place for it. So I can support it.
I can also support the application. We've, in the past, talked about what's the reason for the rule, and the reason is noise level. And this isn't maybe the quietest place, but it's certainly out of the way. It's hidden away when you drive down the street. My only thought is, I'd love to see, almost as a standard practice, to hear more from homeowners as to what is the anticipated noise level of any unit that someone's putting in. We've done that, and we've heard in the past about some levels that we seem to think are acceptable. So for the record, I just think that's something that we should be encouraging homeowners to provide to us. But short of that, short of that, I'm in support of this.
On that, on that question, just quickly, Ms. Kozlaskis, have you, do you know what the noise level?
The decibel level.
The decibel level will be at the property line?
I did ask my contractors that question. I do not know the number from memory, but we discussed it. I can look, I think I have it in writing, but I'm not positive. I'm going to have to look here. But I, they talked about it in comparison to significantly quieter than the existing old one that's both on my house and my neighbor's house, which we, the neighbor we're talking about. We hear theirs on a regular basis as well, from farther away. And so they said it would be significantly lower than those, and I was concerned having two, does the noise double? And they said, "No, it doesn't work that way." They, they said that, and I asked them, "Do I need to invest higher for a special wrap to keep it extra quiet for the neighbors?" But their professional opinion was that the unit that they're proposing, because it's only servicing 1,200-ish square feet on each floor now, it's a smaller-sized unit that's not going to cause as much noise, and they felt that we would be happy with this situation. I don't have the number exactly in front of me.
I have a quick question for Lisa. Lisa, do you remember that level? I thought it was around 70 or 80.
That's what I remember, 70, I think.
And I think all the new units are made to be below that, unless you're talking about a large home.
I have 60-something in my mind, but I also have 40-something in my mind, and I I think that was dishwashers, though, in the 40s, but I'm sorry, I don't know for sure. I just started learning all these homeowner terminology things.
Yeah, Bob, the zoning ordinance does not have a decibel limit for air conditioners, for residential air conditioners, generators, which you all have seen, do have a limit of 70 decibels at the lot line. I think we've learned a lot about noise over the past years, and like 40 to 50 decibels is like a conversation in a quiet room. So under 70 should be a reasonable amount.
Okay, thank you.
I agree, this is Maria. I agree with everything that's been said so far about this application. Along the lines of Brad's point that he'd like to hear more from owners about noise level, I think in the future, I'd like to ask staff that when there is a change in plans for a permitted project, that the plans for the permitted project be shared with us. I asked Lisa for the plans and reviewed them, and they didn't show me what I was interested in. I was interested in looking at the attic floor plan and seeing was there really no other location where the HVAC system could be located up there. The owners have gone to the cost of putting the tubing out to the backyard where the current condenser is. And so that is work that will have to be redone. And I was curious whether there were other locations in the attic that would bring you down below the 75-foot limit. But that said, I can support this application and will be doing so.
Yeah, and this is Chris. I too can support the application. I don't have anything further to add.
Well, just, Maria, I asked the owner when I was there where the existing air handling unit is and furnace. And that is, he pointed out that the that is on the east side. So in the basement on the east side, which is more, which is the 75-foot issue. And if they did, if they put the second furnace anywhere else in the roof, I guess that wouldn't solve the problem with the existing air handling unit on the first floor. So I think they're caught in sort of a dilemma. I, I too, I assume that the noise would be low and acceptable. I thought an alternative location would be on the east side, shielded with vegetation, but I can support it as it is. Shall we call the roll? Can we call for a vote?
Mr. Sermon?
Yes.
Mr. Pelletin?
Yes.
Mr. Felkoff?
Yes.
Ms. Norick?
Yes.
Ms. Urban?
Yes.
Chairman Schneider?
Yes. So this goes with a positive recommendation, and it will go to the Village Board, which ends July 13 for this case, so you may want to be there. And thank you very much, and have a good evening.
Thank you, guys.
I move to authorize the chairman to prepare the report and recommendation for the Zoning Board of Appeals for Case Number 2021-Z29.
I'll second that.
Ms. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Felkoff?
Yes.
Ms. Norick?
Yes.
Mr. Pelletin?
Yes.
Mr. Sermon?
Yeah.
Chairman Schneider?
Yes. Can we proceed to the next case, Ms. Roberts?
The only thing that we didn't do in that last one was to see if there was anybody outside who was interested in commenting.
Thank you for reminding.
I don't know that there are, but Ms. Roberts, is there anybody?
I don't believe so.
It just occurred to me.
That's good, thank you for reminding me.
Our next our next case is 2021-Z11, 1,006 Forest Avenue. This is a request for a special use for unusual recreation equipment, a five-foot side yard joining a street setback variation and a 4.53-foot side yard setback variation to permit the retention of a batting cage. And our applicants are here, we also have a guest with us.
Thank you. Please introduce yourself and good evening.
Good evening. Todd and Andrea Hoffmeister here. We are the homeowners at 1006 Forest Avenue. We have also invited Healy Rice, who is for this meeting. She's our architect, she was our architect for a previous home renovation, and she may be able to shed some light on any pertinent issues relating to the yard size, irregularity, what have you, and with respect to the specifics of the variance request. I believe Healy is with us?
Yes.
Great. Well, thank you for the opportunity for us to present our request. Set forth in my letter, we're requesting, and as Lisa stated, the board's approval for a continued use of our netted batting cage. The issues at hand relate to the zoning ordinance's requirement for various setbacks and its classification for unusual recreation equipment. Let me first start off by saying that there was absolutely no intent on our part to flout the zoning ordinance when the cage was originally installed. As I stated in my letter, we mistakenly assumed that this was a permissible use of installed equipment in our property, on our property, similar to a play structure or hockey rink that can be seen in various yards throughout Willmet. The structure itself is set back in our rear yard, kind of sequestered away from the sidewalk and the street, and is surrounded by arborvitae trees. As I've stated in the letter, it doesn't impair sunlight or air to the adjacent property. The net itself, for those of you who have visited the yard, is readily retractable all the way to the house or to the other side of the cage itself. With respect, again, to its location, our backyard or the rear yard is the smallest portion of our lot, and for the batting cage, it does create a unique circumstance and hardship in locating a conforming installation of just about any play equipment here in the back. We believe that the cage doesn't alter the essential character of the neighborhood. And in today's times, obviously, with, especially with respect to the past 12 months and the era of COVID, one could certainly argue that the cage does enhance the family-friendly nature of the neighborhood. My son is out, he's a 12-year-old. He's out there maybe one and a half, two and a half hours per week. I wish he'd use it more, but he doesn't. 35, 40 minutes at a time. He's forbidden to use anything other than a wood bat. There's, there's no pitching machines. It's just me out there pitching to him. So the, the noise coming from the use of the cage is minimal in our hands. And that's something that we're very cognizant of. We have talked to just about every one of our neighbors, and I believe there are several letters of support with respect to the use and retention of this cage, and they have been obviously very supportive of my son's use of the cage. It's a seasonal use, obviously. And, and Um and and um is primarily used uh by my son and myself and my daughter, for that matter, my twelve-year-old.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh before we proceed, uh Ms. Roberts, you wanted to add something as it related to the similar case we we looked at last year?
Yes, uh an applicant that was before the zoning board last year for a batting cage request, uh some of you probably remember. Um in in tonight's case, uh that request at eleven eleven Sheridan Road is listed as a a similar past case. And uh the applicant in that case asked me to clarify that the the record shows that an impervious surface variation was requested and granted. But if you'll, you may remember during that zoning board meeting, uh when we talked about the structure that was in place, it was determined that um that structure was placed on the grass and so that no uh impervious surface variation was actually needed. Uh the request wasn't amended to remove it, but the consensus was that it did not, that variation did not apply. Um so he asked me to clarify that that the record is somewhat uh unclear and that it still shows that that variation is in there. Uh it was granted uh as part of the full request, but uh didn't really apply upon discussion.
And it doesn't apply here.
Correct. This request also does not have an impervious request.
Lisa, I have a question. In that case, uh from memory, that was a a cage that was set up seasonally? Is that the case? Okay, so it was not as much of a permanent uh situation as this one. They just had it up in the spring, well, I guess, spring, summer and fall.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh uh Mr. Mrs. Hoffmeister, we'll we'll let the, if there are any questions from the members of the board, I I please proceed.
I have a quick question. You said the um the screens are retractable and you keep them retracted. Does that apply to the one at the top as well? It looks like from the picture, there's one on the top. My memory, I don't remember seeing one on the top or if it's just open.
Yeah, so every part of the screen itself is attached to the cable via a hook. So uh you probably noticed that the the screen itself is divided into into two sections. One section you can fully retract, the other section you can certainly retract. You just have to do it in one, two, three, three kind of slides, if you will.
Okay.
So uh my question then is the, your structure um is permanently installed in your yard? Like the the poles are compared to the other project?
Yeah, so I'm not sure about the other, the other um cage. I didn't see the other cage, but it it certainly sounds like it's more permanent than the other cage. I don't, I don't know. The 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 poles here are placed into the ground, but the net itself is.
Moveable, right, okay. Okay.
Um have you talked to any of your neighbors?
Yes, um I've talked, we have spoken to all of our neighbors actually, and um all are in support. I don't know how many letters of support we have in total. Lisa could probably answer that, but if more are requested or desired, I'm certainly happy to um have them write additional.
There was no one in the neighborhood that objected.
No, sir.
No, in fact, they were surprised and they were very, very supportive and and asked if they should come to the meeting tonight to make sure that you knew how supportive they were.
Okay.
Yeah.
When was the cage originally installed?
I'm sorry?
When was the cage originally installed?
This particular cage was originally stalled in July of twenty twenty.
I guess I, you know, the the role of the zoning board is, we don't make the ultimate decision. You know, we're a group of volunteers. We basically interpret the code and try to strictly enforce the code and then um go from there and then the village board makes the ultimate decision. So a lot of times we have to kind of be the ones that read the letter of the law, sort of. Um and the one thing is here in in section thirteen point four point X, it says the initial or the installation character of the equipment must reflect the scale and location of the facilities generally accepted as usual and customary in single-family homes. So you know, I'm kind of on the fence with this because, you know, we are supposed to, and I know you weren't aware that you needed to get a permit, but we have to look back. If you had applied for a permit, would we have, you know, as a zoning board, we have to look at it. Would we have approved it prior to the installation? So I I just thought, I, you know, I'm still on the fence with it, but I just wanted to make that clear.
Thank you.
So just to respond to your point, Bob, and I'm giving you my perspective. Um but I I think with the netting on the batting cage, this is a very see-through structure. As large as it is, um it's, it doesn't have heft to it. Uh except for the corner poles that support the the netting. Uh the fact that the netting is see-through, um you know, i- if you look, you almost don't see the cage. Uh you see the arborvitae. Um and so I I am less concerned about whether it's consistent uh with the character of a single-family district. Um I I also think about um the proliferation of uh trampolines and hockey rinks that we've seen in the village. Um and this is a large cage. I don't want to minimize that. Uh but it it is, in my book, uh consistent with families looking for activities uh to keep their kids in engaged and um active. Um so I I will be supporting this.
I appreciate that. I think of, we just had the trampoline removed. The kids are grown and but uh as I remember, they were yelling and screaming and jumping around and it was fairly tall and especially when they jumped, so this sounds like it's got minimal use and and uh one uh concern was resolved, saying that you're only going to use wood bats because the aluminum will make a lot of noise and that could be a disruption to neighbors, but if they're just using wood bats, then uh uh that makes sense.
Well, the Hoffmeisters have a have a trampoline as well, so they they got it all going on in the backyard. Um I I think that um while the um um Hattises case, um the previous batting cage that we uh heard about um had some unique characteristics to it. Um and this one seems um the the poles are are permanent where the Hattises were not. Um I was primarily concerned about the two closest neighbors because it's right on the property line of the neighbor to the east and it's right on the property line to the neighbor to the north. Um and I I happen to know the neighbors to the north and they're uh um you know, a- as the Hoffmeisters indicated, um nobody has an issue with it. Um and as I said in the last case, the fact that the the current neighbors don't have an issue with it is is good. Um but I I don't think that should carry the day. Um if we're looking at the long-term uh um situation here, um because the next people who move in might have a different take on it. Um so I think that for me, the transparency factor, the seasonal factor, um and um the, in addition to that, the the neighbors not having an issue with it um will allow me to support it.
I'm gonna, uh Ryan, did you want a motion at this point or did you want further discussion?
Further comments, if there are any. Yes, please.
Well, I'll sort of follow up on what's been said. Um unlike the case that I think it was the Sheridan Road address, where people may recall I was strongly against it, I think this is a different case. Number one, there are no complaints. There were complaints from neighbors in that case. Secondly, that case was really weird because they had a couple of, they had two front yards. So the batting cage sort of sat in one of the front yards, and to me, that's different. That one was also being used not just by the family, but there was an invitation to, as I believe, at members of the team to be using it. They were also using, as Rory points out, aluminum bats, and this is being limited to wood bats. There is no pitching machine, which I think is really important. That means that as a dad, Mr. Hoffmeister, you've got to be out there and supervise what's going on. And as to your comment, Bob, and and this one, I'm going to go out on a limb possibly, but I am still relatively new to the zoning board. The trustees, after hearing our result in that other case, decided, as far as I could tell, that the batting cage was within the usual and customary uh recreational equipment for a single-family home. They imposed restrictions, which were significant, but they kind of came to that conclusion. And whether or not that's presidential to us, I don't know, but it seems that the trustees are saying that's to be expected in a community.
That's good to know.
Like Willmet. So for all of those reasons, oh, and by the way, I did have trouble finding it, which was kind of funny because it is well-hidden and I went around the block two or three times trying to figure out the best angle to find the batting cage, and it is really well-hidden in the arborvitae. So I was impressed with what effort's been made to make it look as attractive as a batting cage could possibly look.
Thank you.
Okay, I just wanted to to add, uh as I said in the last, the last case that we looked at, if if you have a basket, uh kids playing basketball in the driveway next door, I assure you that is more noise than in any in the batting cage. And I I I also like the fact that the board, the trustees now recognize that batting cages aren't so out of the ordinary. I mean, there may be more, we may see more of those. And and all of the the uh criteria that that the applicant says he will, he will um apply as they proceed with the use of this, I think makes me comfortable and 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 I can accept it, support it. Do no other comments? Maybe we call for a vote?
We haven't had a motion.
Uh Mr. Chairman, we have um some other people in the meeting who may want to speak. I just want to make sure anybody has a chance.
Thank you.
Nope, I I guess, I guess we're good then. Thank you.
I move to recommend granting a request for a special use for unusual recreation equipment. A five-foot side yard adjoining a street setback variation and a four-point-five-three-foot side yard setback variation to permit the retention of a batting cage at ten oh six Forest Avenue. In accordance with the plans submitted, the zoning board determines that the special use will run with the use.
I can second that.
Okay, for all of the reasons that have already been stated, um I I think that um this is an installation that should be permitted and um I will be supporting it.
And I I I mean, it it, I I was going to say pretty much the same thing. There there, I I don't have anything in particular to add to it. And I was impressed with the number of letters in support. Um as a matter of fact, I think it's probably more in my time here on the board, the more letters of support than I've seen for any other uh um uh application. So um you know, you did a good job on on preparing for it and um I can support it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are we ready for a vote?
Yes, I think so.
Ms. Roberts, please.
Ms. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Pelletin?
Yes.
Mr. Felkoff?
Yes.
Ms. Norick?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Chairman Schneider?
Yes.
So this will go with a positive recommendation to the village board, which will meet on July thirteenth, so you may want to be there. And I appreciate it, uh you're uh being here this evening and thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Have a good evening.
I move to authorize the chairman to prepare the report and recommendation for the zoning board of appeals for case number twenty twenty-one Z eleven.
I'll second that.
Ms. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Felkoff?
Yes.
Ms. Norick?
Yes.
Mr. Pelletin?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Chairman Schneider?
Yes.
So now we can proceed to the next case.
Our next case is twenty twenty-one Z twenty-seven fifty-six Indian Hill. This is a request for a one-hundred-and-ninety-five-point-seven-two-square-foot front yard impervious surface coverage variation to permit the construction of a patio on the legal non-conforming structure, and our applicants are here.
I was reminded that uh you may not have been here and be sworn in, so I will ask you to do so now. Uh do you swear or affirm that you will tell the truth in the testimony that you are about to give? So please say, I do.
I do.
I do.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Good evening, Chairman Schneider, members of the zoning board. My name is Christopher Canning, and I am here this evening representing Dr. Jim Fox and Ann Creavy Fox, the owners of fifty-six Indian Hill Road. Uh Dr. Fox is on the screen and also here tonight is Maggie Burke, who is the designer of the patio. I know you've had a chance to read the staff review, staff report, and I thank Lisa for preparing it. I know you've had a chance to review my letter outlining the standards of review. Um so I just want to hit kind of the high points of the presentation. You can see from the packet that the zoning board is quite familiar with variations for front yard impervious surface coverage cases. It arises in many of the cases that are in the packet and in the vast majority of those cases, the request has been granted. Tonight, you're faced with a very unique circumstance, and I urge you to consider this when you are evaluating a request. As described in my letter to the zoning board, fifty-six Indian Hill Road is located both in the village of Willmet and in unincorporated Cook County. So if you visited the property, you see that what you would call normally the front door or front yard is on the north of the house facing Indian Hill Golf Course. That is in unincorporated Cook County. What you would consider to be the rear of the house where the patio would be located, that is located in the village of Willmet. So to the casual observer, the front yard faces Indian Hill Road and the rear yard faces the neighbor to the south. The home was built in nineteen fifty-two. Um it received a building permit from the village of Willmet and was cited in that location. So presumably, when the home was built, it was in a conforming location and had conforming setbacks. So presumably, the front yard was facing Indian Hill Road. However, um under article thirty dash thirteen point two sub C of the zoning ordinance, all lots must front on a public street within the village. I believe that section was added in nineteen ninety-three, well after the home was built and well before the Foxes became the owners. And so for, and and therefore, as a matter of law, not any action that the Foxes have taken, the portion of the home along Grant Street now becomes the front yard. The portion to the east of the house becomes the rear yard. The portion along the south neighbor is the side yard. And we don't really think too much about the area to the north, which is in unincorporated Cook County. And therefore, you are faced with a front yard setback case where the front yard is on Grant. And as you went down Grant, you just saw bushes and what appeared to be the side of a house rather than the front of the house.
Where, excuse me for one second, where is Grant? Where the golf course was?
No, Grant is in the village of Willmet. It is the Stubbs Street. I- it's a dead end.
On the west side of the house.
Okay.
Yes, west side of the house. So
Thank you.
So Commissioner Sermon, that's considered the front yard for our purposes of seeking relief. And so during the pandemic, uh Dr. Fox uh went to go build a patio where there was a pea gravel patio adjacent to a um a screened-in porch. And that's when uh he learned and and Maggie learned that there was this front yard issue that had to be addressed. Um and that is why we end up here tonight. But in in considering what's in the front yard, the lot, the area But in considering what's in the front yard, the lot, the area along Grant, you see that there's part of the driveway coming in off of Indian Hill Road, which is in the village of Willmet. There's a small sidewalk. But there's also a very large portion of the garage. It would be a hardship to remove part of the garage and the part of the driveway in Willmet is essential because that's how you get off of Illinois, excuse me, off of Indian Hill Road through unincorporated Cook County, then into Willmet to get into the garage. So what you have here is a hardship as to how the zoning ordinance applies to Dr. Fox's request to have a patio in what is a logical location adjoining a screened-in patio, close to where family activities are, close to where the kitchen is, close to entertainment, would be putting it elsewhere in to the east of the screened-in porch would be in areas which are used for different parts of living and have nothing to do with entertaining. And so this is the most logical location for the flow of the house and the way the family has used the house, both before and during and now after the pandemic has calmed down. So I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Fox to talk a little bit about his ownership of the home and how this issue came about. And then Maggie Burke will be able to address your, any questions about the design of the patio. So Dr. Fox?
Dr. Fox, before you go ahead, Mr. Canning, would there be any issue if this location was defined as either a back or a side yard of the house?
Yeah, Ms. Roberts and I talked about that. We don't think so. But we haven't looked at that. I see Maggie shaking her head. Maggie, do you want to answer Commissioner Felkoff's question?
According to the allowed percentages of front and side yard, we would be well under considered a side yard.
So it's simply a matter of definition. Because this is now defined as the front yard, whether it looks like the front yard, that's the problem.
Yes, because now you're putting more impervious in a front yard. And if you went down Grant, I think your first reaction would be, wow, this looks like a side yard. And Dr. Fox can also tell you about how that little stub of Grant is treated by people who park at the end of the street for a variety of matters. Some perhaps nefarious, some perhaps childish. So, but did that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Dr. Fox, would you like to add?
Sure, thanks, Chris. I'm Jim Fox. My wife and I purchased our home here three years ago after living in a contiguous neighborhood for the previous 30 years. And it's a great area and as Chris mentioned, it's a unique situation because our property lies both within unincorporated Cook County and the village of Willmet. When we moved in, we were anxious to have outdoor enjoyment and entertainment area. There was an existing pea gravel garden walk that didn't really suit our needs. And we undertook major landscape renovation last week to remove all the pea gravel. And our design was to incorporate a new dry-jointed bluestone patio adjacent to our screen porch. And during COVID, we learned on the value of having outdoor spaces for living and enjoyment. I'm sorry?
That's it. Please proceed. I think it was just, go ahead.
Okay. Chris described very well the unique nature of our property. And I don't think anyone walking past our house on Indian Hill Road would consider that our side yard. The house was built to front on Indian Hill. And when it was built in 1952, clearly, this was under a previous iteration of the Willmet zoning ordinance because the village allowed a large garage and bedroom to be built in what is now considered the front setback. And our backyard is private. We are completely fenced and have an evergreen hedge over, around most of it. So our yard really is invisible from Grant Street. Grant Street, as was described, dead ends right at our property. And there is presently only one driveway on the north end of Grant Street. There's very little traffic other than recycle and garbage trucks. And as Chris mentioned, occasional nature lovers who come to the end of our street. The, my wife and I feel strongly that our enjoyment of this great house would be enhanced with the addition of the proposed patio. We would plan to obviously have outdoor furniture and a grill out there. We're in our late 60s and we don't have a lot of parties anymore. So I think it would be used for our quiet enjoyment.
Thank you, Dr. Fox. Any questions for the applicant or the designer of the patio? Let me just ask, was there ever a consideration given to making it kind of a permeable surface? Was that out of the question? Not that that is a requirement, I'm just asking.
Sure. I guess the pea gravel that was down there before is considered semi-permeable. And I know that views of permeable surfaces seem to be changing year to year. In terms of utility, a pea gravel patio is somewhat lacking. And we would prefer to have a hard surface. As I mentioned, we plan to use dry-jointed, not mortared, bluestone. And we do not anticipate any runoff for draining, drainage problems whatsoever.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for?
Yeah, so, and this is probably for Maggie, or best answer by Maggie. The elevation of the patio would remain the same?
Yes, it's very flat.
It wouldn't be raised at all?
No, not at all.
We stepped down from our screen porch to the patio grade.
And I should correct what I said earlier. According to Rachel Randall, a side yard adjoining a street allows 30%, which would be the same as the front yard. But a typical side and backyard would allow 60% impervious. So just to clarify.
Thank you. I did happen to speak to your neighbor to the south who was in their backyard. I think it's Ms. Winkler, is that correct?
That's Ms. Ann Winkle.
Yes.
And we chatted a bit and she obviously has no objection to what you're proposing. I just wanted to add that. Any other questions for the applicant? If not, are we ready?
Well, do we have any comments from?
Yeah. Thank you, Ryan. Anybody else out there that wishes to comment on this?
I just wanted to note one other thing, and this was touched upon, but the bedroom, there are bedrooms to the east side and there is just a hall with a bathroom to the south side. So to plan for a patio in a different area really doesn't serve the interests of the Foxes. The patio location, which is only 246 square feet, a very small patio, is directly off the screen and porch and kitchen and with the typical, or with the existing gas location. So it just, it's not like we didn't consider other options. This is just the most logical location for the patio.
Thank you. Ms. Roberts, do we have any other comments from anyone?
There is no one else in the meeting and no comments on YouTube.
Then I'll move to recommend granting a request for 195.72 square foot or 8.53% front yard impervious surface coverage variation to permit the construction of a patio on the legal non-conforming structure at 56 Indian Hill Road in accordance with the plans submitted.
It's Maria the second? Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
I drove out there and took a look and I parked in the driveway off of Indian Hill Road. And I looked around and I looked around, I looked around and I tried to figure out where this patio was going. And then finally looked back at the plans and then looked on Google Maps and drove around to Grant Place or Grant Street or whatever it is and dodged the nefarious nature lovers and was able to see a little bit through the Arbor Vitae of the backyard. But I really think this whole thing rests on the fact that it's not the front yard. It's a side yard. And that while the statute says one thing, that in practice, it's something else and that it predates the statute. And so I have absolutely no problem at all in supporting this.
I agree with everything that Ryrie just said. When I pulled up to the house this afternoon, I did not go to 56 Indian Hill Road. I went to the front yard and was surprised to find garbage cans and recycling cans to greet me at the end of Grant. I had an easier time finding the location of the proposed patio because I slid right in through the side gate that was at the end of Grant. And I think I surprised Dr. Fox and his family as they were sitting in a living room or a family room as I marched around the property. Grant is very clearly a side yard, a backyard to this property. And I would go one further than Ryrie and just say that the village of Willmet declared it the backyard. At some point, they had an alley there or the right-of-way for an alley that the plaque shows has been vacated. So the village planned for these parcels not to face Grant. They were expecting an alley down the backs of these properties. And I think that's a key point, too. The property's on Kennelworth, back up to this house. So the area that we're talking about is functionally a side and a backyard for the Foxes as it is for their neighbors. And I see this as a very cut and dried case and I'll be supporting it.
Any other comments?
Beyond, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
This is Chris and I agree. And I went to the front and went up the walk where Dr. Fox met me and took me to his yard, just to clarify. Each of us did our own thing, but yes, clearly, this is the side yard. So I can support this request.
So all of you, all of you trespassed uninvited?
Not me.
I didn't. I've been caught for zoning ordinances before, so I learned my lesson years ago. No, beyond the code issue and the orientation of the lot, I think it's the right location for a patio and it's a very modest-sized patio. So I can support it.
And I support it also and I did not get caught for being a trespasser, possibly as a peeping tom as I was looking through the arboretum or the bushes there, but that's all. But I agree with everything that's been said.
Did you get your badge yet? We'll get our badges at the next in-person meeting.
I can too support it. I think if there's a case ever that deserves a variation, there are not many that are so clear-cut. This is clearly something that fits in that category and I can support it. So with that, I think we can call for a vote.
Mr. Pelletin?
Yes.
Ms. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Felkoff?
Yes.
Ms. Norick?
Yes.
Mr. Sermon?
Yes.
Chairman Schneider?
Yes. So this is a unanimous recommendation to the village board, which will meet on July 13th. You may want to be there or your representatives may want to be there. And thank you very much for taking time to meet with us this evening and good luck.
Thank you very much and thank you for your work on this matter.
Thanks for your consideration. Thank you, Chris.
Very good. Have a good night.
Good night.
I'll move to authorize the chairman to prepare the report and recommendation for the Zoning Board of Appeals for Case Number 2021Z27.
Second.
Mr. Felkoff?
Yes.
Ms. Urban?
Yes.
Ms. Norick?
Yes.
Mr. Pelletin?
Yes.
Mr. Sermon?
Yes.
Chairman Schneider?
Yes.
We have two more items on the agenda.
I move to approve the minutes from Wednesday, May 12th, 2021.
Second.
Mr. Sermon?
Yes.
Ms. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Felkoff?
Yes.
Ms. Norick?
Yes.
Mr. Pelletin?
Yes.
Chairman Schneider?
Yes.
I also recommend approval of the minutes from Wednesday, May 19th, 2021.
Second.
Mr. Sermon?
Yes.
Ms. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Felkoff?
Yes.
Ms. Norick?
Yes.
Mr. Pelletin?
Yes.
Chairman Schneider?
Yes.
Are there any, Ms. Roberts, any people out there that wish to raise something with us?
I think we're all alone.
With that, can I have a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn the meeting.
I'll second that.
Ms. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Felkoff?
Yes.
Ms. Norick?
Yes.
Mr. Pelletin?
Yes.
Mr. Sermon?
Yes.
Chairman Schneider?
Yes.
I have a, I just had a quick question for Lisa. I noticed that